A call to order, the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, January 18th, 2024. Please stand and join us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kroll, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knoblock?
Here.
Commissioner Noel?
Here.
Commissioner Heikala?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler?
Yep.
And Chair Schwartz.
Thank you.
Our first order of business is to adopt our agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Casey. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have approval of the minutes from our December 21st meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Heikala, second by Noel. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the minutes are approved. Our first order of business this evening is to appoint, elect, rather than appoint, elect a vice chair. Two people have indicated ahead of time that they were interested in the position, Commissioners Knoblock and Commissioner Geisler. Anyone else interested in the position? All right. How do we want to do this? A secret ballot, or do we just want to roll call, or?
Yeah, I think it's okay to just do a motion and then-
A second and kind of do a roll call vote. Yeah, we, the difference this year was just kind of suggested to staff if people were interested to share that beforehand, just to give some idea for you all who was interested to maybe help, help there. But certainly if anyone else is interested, they can be nominated.
Certainly.
Yeah.
All right, have any motions?
I would move that we put Ray Knoblock's name into contention.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Commissioner Knoblock. Any other motions?
Motion for Commissioner Geisler.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second for Commissioner Geisler. Any other motions? All right, hearing done. All in favor of Commissioner Knoblock?
Aye.
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 Right, can I vote, can I?
Sure.
Oh, can I vote for him?
Oh, you can vote. And I guess we'll have to ask, who's opposed?
Aye.
Nate.
That's correct, Nate.
Nate.
All right. I guess we don't need to have the second motion since we have four votes for Commissioner Knoblock and three againsts. So congratulations, Commissioner Knoblock as vice chair for coming here.
Thank you.
All right, our next piece of business is consider adoption of the 2024 Planning Commission policy. Mr. Kroll.
Yeah, just to give a little summary, so each year the Planning Commission is asked to adopt rules of order, your internal policies and procedures, and a code of ethics, and it can be changed, you know, year to year as needed. There were a number of changes made this past year in 2023. Those changes have remained the same and are carried over into this 2024 policy. The main change, as I noted in the staff report, is really just staff kind of had a preference to put that all in one document to maybe make the motion a little easier. We can kind of keep track of one document and changes versus three kind of separate floating documents. So really, the change is just kind of combining it all into one document and then a couple minor grammatical changes and really just for the sake of brevity, if something felt repetitive, it just tried to combine it a little bit to help shorten the document a little bit. So happy if there's any questions you might have on the document, or if there are changes people are interested in, you can certainly do that as well. Otherwise, I'd recommend to approve the policy that you have in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Discussion?
We seem to do our revisions this year, you know, and it's kind of consolidated it. So I would move that we accept the policy.
Also, can I?
Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the policy is adopted. Next, we have planning case 23-4, a site plan extension at 3011 124th Avenue Northwest, Rachel Development Incorporated. Mr. Kroll.
All right. So yeah, as Chair Schwartz had mentioned, we're talking about the parcel at 3011 124th Ave Northwest. It's currently a vacant site next to Metro Self Storage. So back in March, March 7th of 2023, Rachel Development Incorporated was granted PUD approval from the City Council for a new 40-unit assisted living and memory care facility at the site. And in our city code, currently, site plan and PUD approval is good for one year, and at that point, it's kind of under the assumption that the applicant is then moving on to the next step in the process, applying for building permits, starting construction, doing, doing site work. However, an applicant can request an extension of that site plan or PUD approval by a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and then the City Council gives final approval on that. So the applicant, Rachel Development, is requesting a one-year extension on their PUD approval. In the, the letter that was attached, the main reasons are really just due to current challenges in the market due to high construction costs and interest rates and financing costs for the project. The applicant has indicated that they've fully purchased the site from Metro Storage, so they do own and control that site, and do still intend to construct the assisted living and memory care facility. They're just kind of waiting it out a little while. Hopefully, if interest rates or the financing costs go down, they would like to proceed. So with, with that, staff is recommending to recommend approval of their one-year extension of PUD approval, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Commission, any questions for Mr. Kroll?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Kroll, as far as the extensions go, is there a limit to how many extensions can be requested?
There is. So currently in our code, it, it states that they're grant, they can be granted a one, one-time extension of one year. So after, at this point, then, that would take them to March 7th, 2025, and if there wasn't any progress made on the site, they would just have to re-submit a PUD plan if they wanted to construct their assisted living facility.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock?
I have a question for Planner Kroll. To your knowledge, do you perceive or see the potential for any other development in Coon Rapids to be affected by market conditions and interest rates? Is that a trend? Is that something you think may, like in this circumstance? Because-
Yeah, I, I do think it's-
Possibility?
Yeah, something we're seeing kind of across the metro for sure. I believe there were a couple of extensions also granted, maybe in, was it October? Maybe this past year by the commission and council on the Mary T. Townhome project as well. I'm not recalling the other projects. So it's certainly something we've, we've been seeing, and we've just kind of seen land use and development applications slow down given current conditions. So it, it seems to kind of be kind of the trend right now, where people are waiting for construction and financing costs to reduce.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Casey.
So, Mr. Kroll, maybe I was just unaware, but I thought we, we saw that proposal as Norabella or Norbella. Was it always under this Rachel Development umbrella?
Yeah, that, that's correct. So Rachel Development was the, the applicant and kind of acts as the, I guess, kind of the development team and the contractor on this. And then the, the actual kind of property management of the assisted living facility would be that Norbella.
Oh, I see.
So here, it's just, in this case, the developer was the applicant, and so that's why their name is listed there.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we do not need a public hearing, so-
Chair Schwartz, all-
Commissioner Knoblock?
If that's the case, there's no public meeting. I make the move, I make the proposal, our recommendation in planning case 23-4, that we recommend approval of the one-year extension to March 7th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that motion passes. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and a decision will be made by the City Council at their February 6th meeting. Next case, the planning case 24-2, a comprehensive plan amendment at 2831 113th Avenue Northwest, City of Coon Rapids. Mr. Kroll.
All right. Thank you, Chair and Commission. So this comprehensive plan amendment application and then the following kind of subsequent rezoning application are for the same parcel. So I'm, I'll just kind of give one presentation to cover both items, and then there's the separate public hearing and public comment for, for each case. But we're, we're talking about the parcels at 2831 113th Ave Northwest. Those are both city-owned parcels and are of the former fire station number three. So the site plan for the new fire station that's over on 111th Ave and Mississippi Boulevard, just kind of southwest of this site over here, were approved back in October 2021, and that the construction of the new fire station is pretty much complete, and a lot of the operations have started to move over into that new facility and are going to continue here in January and February. So the existing building on the site, oops. There, I'm sorry. The existing building on the site, you know, was, was designed very specifically for fire department uses and activities, and it doesn't really lend itself well to other city uses aside from storage. So staff felt like the storage use wouldn't be a good long-term use for the building, just kind of given maintenance and operation costs to maintain. That would kind of really make it a really expensive storage facility. And so staff kind of felt this was a well-suited site for redevelopment for residential uses in the city. There was a work session that was held with the City Council back in April of 2023, just to kind of make them aware that there wasn't really a city use for this site and what potential redevelopment could look like. We talked about different proposals related to more moderate density, kind of attached townhome design, as well as single-family home lots. And I think through that discussion, staff also talked with, kind of talked informally with some local home builders to kind of get an idea of what they think could be possible on the site. And ultimately, it kind of landed, or the City Council indicated that single-family home lots felt most appropriate for this location. I did note in one of the staff reports as well, that kind of creates some complication for development on the site. There's a sewer line that runs on this kind of shared property line between the two lots, with that it has a 60-foot permanent easement, when you aren't able to build any structures in that 60-foot easement. So it kind of will pose a challenge or a kind of unique complication to a potential layout on the site. And so I think that also kind of led in favor that this would be more suitable for single-family home lots. So the, in order to accommodate a project like that, city staff are requesting a comprehensive plan amendment that would align the future land use designation for single-family homes. So it's currently designated institutional. When the 2040 plan was adopted, I don't believe the Fire Station 3 proposal had been finalized, and so this was, just kind of remained institutional designation, kind of assuming that the fire station was going to be there for a very long time. And now that, that's not the case, and the city doesn't necessarily have a, a use for it, we're, we're moving forward with this comprehensive plan amendment. And to help make it easier for, for our future development, staff felt we could take care of some of these land use applications in advance of a specific proposal. So we're, we're currently drafting a request for proposal or RFP process to redevelop the site for single-family home lots, and we're hoping that could be made public or that process start this spring or kind of early summer of this year. So the Planning Commission and City Council would review a future application that would be submitted by the future applicant for that redevelopment, and the City Council would ultimately also have to approve any, any kind of land sale for the project. So there'll, there'll still be multiple chances to kind of see this, the site redevelop and be a part of that, that process. The current zoning of the site, it's actually split, so the front half is moderate-density residential, and then kind of the back half is low-density residential, too. And the subsequent rezoning application would be to rezone both of these parcels just completely low-density residential, too. So just wanted to show again, kind of, this is the future land uses in the comprehensive plan, and the surrounding uses primarily low-density residential, and then you have Port Campus Square on the south side of 113th Ave, which is one of those four nodes along the boulevard that have been identified as priority redevelopment opportunities. So that's more of a location where you would likely see or encourage higher-density residential development or kind of mixed-use, commercial uses there. And then the same for current zoning, primarily low-density residential, too, and again with that port zoning district. So just some other considerations staff had looking at our criteria for rezoning and comprehensive plan amendments. Again, we, we felt like institutional purposes were no longer needed at this site, and so these applications would allow residential development that's at a similar intensity to the homes that surround the parcel. And then we identified a number of land use policies and a housing policy in our 2040 plan that I think would support both this comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning. So staff is recommending approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Again, happy to answer any questions, kind of just on the, the amendment, I guess, here, and then we'll do the rezoning next.
Mr. Kroll, I see in your report that you're anticipating four to six single-family homes. Is, do you have any idea what the size of this lot is?
Yeah, we're, so I couldn't kind of go and get an estimation off of Anoka County's GIS. We are, we do have a surveyor that's currently surveying this property to get all those final details. It wasn't ready quite in time for this meeting, so we'll know more. But with some of those informal conversations with home builders, it's probably likely that we could, you'd be able to get four lots here, and then making this a potential fifth lot. There is some language in our code that if the lot is a little bit smaller, if it's, I think, within 70% or something of what our minimum would be, and the, the house or the structure could still comply with all of the setbacks, that there is a way to have a slightly smaller lot than what our code would allow. So it really is kind of part of that RFP process would be a learning for us as well of what developers see that they could kind of fit on this site. So I don't know if that, that helps maybe give, give a little estimation on, on what we're thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions for Mr. Kroll?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Noel.
Mr. Kroll, it looks like on the, on the south side there, or on the north side, rather, on 113th, there's one single-family home next to the fire department, then it's surrounded by townhomes and some apartments. Is that easement causing you to look away from the moderate-density development on the south side of the lots? Because it appears that, I think between the two lots, it's about 275 feet across, and it's a big enough piece where you could do like that structure you put next to Hoover Elementary, the six-plex townhomes?
Mm-hmm.
That would fit there, and it might fit in to what's already there better?
Yeah, that was part of it. Yeah, maybe you could basically put the driveway or like an alley across that easement and build structures the other way. Then maybe it's a little awkward that the townhomes would kind of face, kind of face into the, the yards, I guess, of the, the neighboring homes, as they would probably likely be oriented differently.
True.
Yeah, I, I think if they were oriented towards 113th with that easement, it could be difficult, where you'd probably have maybe a two-plex and maybe a three-plex or something. And I, I think just talking with some home builders, they maybe had concern with the size of the site, that they might just not be able to put as many townhomes to really make the project pencil out like they would want to.
Well, if you look at the, the eastern piece, would that be big enough? I mean, it's, it seems to me, I think it's 150 foot wide and then deep, and guessing it's 200. And it's a little awkward piece, but would that be able to fit, you know, a 16-inch building, like I said, the one by Hoover Elementary, and does it, does it make sense for, you know, what's in the surrounding area?
Yeah, I guess, Steph, we looked at that a little bit, and I, yeah, it would probably be likely that you could do something there. I guess I, we didn't do a full analysis. There's also like common and private open space, kind of minimum parking and some of those things that would also factor into a townhome development. So we, we just didn't do a full analysis to really determine what could be possible there, yeah.
I'm only looking at that just because you've got just the one single-family home that faces there, and the rest are apartments or, you know, the townhomes on the end, that that might fit in better with what's on that side of the street, and then do single-family on the north side and then do island piece.
Yeah, yeah, that definitely makes sense. I think, yeah, we, again, we didn't do a full analysis on the site, and I think what we heard from some of the home builders we talked to, and then from that council work session, it just really seemed the preference was to do single-family home lots here. And so that's kind of where staff kind of saw some value in that, since there is no residential here at all.
Right.
Even going to single-family home lots does help increase the, I guess, increase homes in, in the density of, of this site, since no one is currently living there.
I'm just wondering if we lose any flexibility by doing a rezoning where you don't have the ability to do a moderate-density there? I mean, if you still have moderate-density in the south side, or however you look at it, you might be able to get six units in and then maybe three single families?
Sure.
So, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey.
Commissioner Noel basically echoed exactly what I was kind of considering here. I feel like the zoning may be a little early. I think the comp plan amendment absolutely has to happen because it's not institutional anymore. I think that's, that's totally reasonable. I just, the, the tenor of the 113th Road is a moderate-density area. That is the look and the feel, that is what's there. There's quadplex, there's a couple, you know, apartment pieces up and down there. The townhomes that are a block away are perpendicular to the road, to 113th, they have their own little driveways there. So I, I don't know that, I don't know that I feel that jumping to single-family is the right set for the south half of these two lots. The question that I have is, you know, is the city gonna potentially, after, maybe with this survey coming that's part of it, are we gonna be doing some lot splits here? Because that one on the north side of 113th Lane, just kind of inside that circle, I mean, that very clearly can't maintain one piece of, one parcel. So would the city at least carve that off? And then we could maybe revisit zoning in some smaller pieces, just because it doesn't make sense to have all these be one anymore, even, even in future development plans. And again, I, I just feel like zoning may be a little bit of jumping the gun when we know that there are probably lot splits coming, to even make this viable to develop from in the future.
Sure.
So, but comp plan, again, 100% agree, it's non-institutional, we want to guide it, you know, MDR or LDR, too, one of the two, fine. I just feel like zoning might be a little fast.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
A question for Planner Kroll. Is, I know this last year, we've had a lot of applications for townhomes and multi-unit dwellings. In your experience or your exposure to the builders and the market and other areas, are you seeing increased trend to single homes or to townhomes, multi-units? Or is it maybe something tied more to the matching of single-family homes to this area?
Sure. Um, yeah, I guess I don't, I don't know if I can speak confidently to what's kind of the, the market. I think there, we've certainly seen interest in townhome development as well as single-family lots, I think particularly with the Port Riverwalk development. You know, we, that was all single-family home lots that are being sold there pretty well. So I guess I, I don't know if I'd feel confident saying one, one way or the other. I think ultimately, we kind of looked at, looked at this on the staff side and could kind of go either way, and it just seemed that the preference from the council was to do single-family home lots, and it, it does kind of go with the surrounding area. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikala.
I kind of tend to agree with Commissioners Geisler and Noel. Couple times, you mentioned that we have done a quote preliminary, but not a full analysis. I think you mentioned that twice, if not three times. And I think we might be jumping the gun-
Sure.
-if you haven't done a full and complete analysis of this.
Yeah, I, you know, with this kind of being a city application, we do have that 60-day period that we can continue to extend that or withdraw the rezoning application and reapply at a later date. So I certainly, I don't think there's any harm in being flexible on that if we want to wait and bring that to a future meeting to think about that rezoning more. But yeah, part, part of the RFP process, too, will be kind of through that, learning what developers kind of see of what, what is possible on that site. We certainly want to give them, you know, in that RFP, some guidance around like what we would allow. And I think we were leaning towards single-family home lots, but can certainly keep that open to discussion as needed, too.
All right, well, right now, we're just dealing with the comprehensive plan, and there's no reason not to bring, continue that forward. So any other questions before we have a public hearing? All right, hearing none. At this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 24-2, a comprehensive plan amendment for 2831 113th Avenue Northwest, City of Coon Rapids. Anyone wish to speak? Public hearing.
Just a question.
If you wish to speak, come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Maria Craig. I live on the property right alongside the lot, so- I live on the property right alongside the lot, so across the street from the little vacant area there. My address is 11351 Edelweis. And I'm just curious if this will be notified of the ongoing hearings for this planning? And if there's any, you know, as a person who's lived there for a little over a year and a half now, I guess I have safety concerns with the change. So I'm very curious to see what would be placed there. It's a very high-traffic area, given that it was public land, people cross it all the time. And that's just what I would like to share. So that is my question and statement.
Any other for the public hearing?
Go ahead to the microphone, please, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Dan Reinhardt. I own the lot just west, 2860 113th. I would just encourage the committee to be mindful on the backside at 113th Lane Northwest, at that curve there. It's a very quiet neighborhood, and with, depending on how it was developed with a multifamily or a multifamily housing, just the increase of traffic, depending on how the parking and driveways were laid out, it feels like that's going to bring a lot of additional traffic into the area. On the, what is it, 113th Avenue, the side now that has the townhomes on it, that's a highly-traveled road already, which makes sense, as some of the commissioners have suggested that kind of splitting the lot this way and doing residential maybe on the backside and more of a multi-unit dwelling on the south side. So just, I encourage the commission and the committees to be mindful of the impact on the traffic flow in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Crowe?
Staff did receive a written request today for the public hearing, so I'll just give you all a copy, just so that's on the record, from Teresa and Gary Anderson at 2851 113th Ave Northwest.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowe, do we know, so north of 113th Lane, that oddly-shaped parcel? So we don't know right now if that's buildable yet, right?
Yeah, not for certain. It's probably pretty close to our minimum, single-family lot. And then again, there is some language if it's, I think, within seventy percent of what we would require, and the home or the building itself could still meet the setbacks. You know, that could be a conforming lot, and we could use that. But yeah, we just don't know yet what that case is going to be.
So that lot may become and stay vacant no matter what we do, just given the nature of the road. And then as far as the other spots there, on the, it's kind of the eastern parcel, because this is kind of a two-part, two-piece parcel, is that eastern parcel, would that even have access to 113th Lane? I mean, it looks like it stops before it, or we'd have to get really creative with lot splits, wouldn't we?
Yeah, are you talking about kind of if this would become a lot, like the access here on the corner, you mean?
Yes, that kind of eastern half of it.
Yeah, it would certainly be something we'd have to kind of work with the developers or whoever would kind of apply for that RFP process would kind of figure that out. Yeah, it's likely, my guess is, you know, there'd be some kind of angled frontage here to get the access on the corner, but yeah, certainly probably is going to take some creativity to get access on that corner.
So with that said, it's most likely that the access to this site would be off of 113th Avenue to the south, rather than 113th Lane to the north, given the layout of the site, unless we, again, unless the city gets creative on its lot-splitting.
And then maybe just to answer the other question, so certainly, any of the comprehensive plan amendment, the rezoning, if the rezoning gets kind of postponed, we would continue to post that public hearing notice in the city paper. For the RFP process itself, you know, we haven't quite fully figured out the kind of timeline or the process, but it'll certainly be on our city website, and we'd be doing some promotion that way to get people to apply for the RFP process. But I'm happy I can also have my card and share my contact too, and people can, please feel free to email myself or anyone in the planning department, and we can certainly keep people updated on the progress of this project.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Commissioner Geisler.
And Mr. Crowe, just to clarify too, for the comp plan, low-density on the comp plan is two to four units per acre, so up to a quarter-acre lot size generally, or down to, I should say?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, and I think the total, this total site with both parcels, I think, might just be over two acres, if I'm recalling.
So if theoretically, even with a low-density designation, it could be somewhere up to eight units on the site? Most likely not, though, given the buildable area of that northern part?
Yeah, that's correct. So yeah, I would say, yeah, by the low-density designation, it could go up to eight units. That's probably unlikely, just, yeah, given that permanent easement that's there, and then again, the open space, kind of common, private open space, parking and the setbacks that we would require, probably makes it unlikely that you'd get eight units on that site.
Thank you.
Commission, any other comments?
Does the city, excuse me, does the city currently maintain that little spot on the other side of the road, on the curve there?
I am not sure. I guess I don't know, maybe.
They do.
Yeah, okay, okay. But I would hope so, but I guess I didn't know. Maybe we haven't kept up on the grass there on that corner.
All right, Commissioner, your thoughts, plans, concerns, motions?
Can we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I'll make a motion in Planning Case 24-2 that we recommend approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment based on the findings within our packet.
Motion by Geisler, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And this is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and a decision by the City Council will be at their February 6th meeting. Our next case is Planning Case 24-1, a rezoning for 2831 113th Avenue Northwest, City of Coon Rapids. Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, so I won't add too much here, as we've kind of been discussing that with the comp plan amendment. So again, our, the current proposal was, would be to rezone this whole site from moderate-density residential and low-density residential to just low-density residential to, and that was the staff recommendation, but if the commission would want to postpone action, certainly feel free to make a motion to do that, and I don't know if I have any staff concerns with that.
Thank you.
And yeah, happy to answer any other additional questions too.
Thank you. Commission, any questions on the rezoning? Mr. Crowe. Commissioner Schmucke.
Do we need to state like how long it would be postponed, or is it, is there any time?
I think Blair, it's always probably good if we indicate which meeting it would be postponed to, or to say, the motion should indicate that it's postponed to the February meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add to that, I'm just, I'm curious, it's like, is postponing it going to change anything if it's hypothetically in February? What are we looking for exactly to, to be ready to present them?
Sure. Yeah, I guess it's kind of up to the commission, and if it gets close to the, kind of that sixty-day timeline that we typically follow, or that state statute says we follow, you know, with this being kind of a city-initiated project, we certainly can just withdraw our application and reapply at a later time or something to help reset that clock as well. So it feels like there's some flexibility there on what the commission would like to do.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Crowe, are you able to like put an RFP out, even if you withdraw this, just to kind of get some ideas of what developers would have in mind before we make a decision on rezoning?
Yeah, we certainly can. Yeah, I think our thought as staff was just to maybe do some of this application work ahead of time, just to help make it a little smoother when someone was selected through that RFP process. But certainly, the rezoning wouldn't have to be in place for us to start that process and select someone. So when they would come through with a plat, application, they could submit a rezoning if that was needed as well.
Mr. Chair. So Mr. Crowe, if we're looking at that February meeting, would we have survey information to, you know, digest by then? Or would it make a difference for us, maybe?
Sure. Yeah, so Matt Brown is kind of leading that process, so I'm not sure when the survey would be ready. I believe they were going to be going out there next week. So I guess, yeah, I'm not sure how long it would take if it would be ready by the February meeting or not.
Or if it would have useful information for us to read. We would like to see.
Mr. Bucicconi.
Okay. So there's an application, it is from the city in front of this body. I think you conduct the public hearing, and then go from there. You make a decision about what you want to do with the application, because it is an application, even though the city is the applicant. With a regard to postponing the agenda item, and Mr. Crowe can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there's any land-use applications for the February meeting.
Yeah, there's no land-use applications. We do have some potential ordinance amendments that we would be looking at bringing in February, but no current land-use application.
So if your plan is to postpone the item, if that's where the consensus arrives, keep that in mind, that there's not currently a required meeting in February.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmucke.
And just to be clear, so if we decline the application, so I think our options are to approve, to postpone, or decline, so?
It's a recommend.
Right.
So you could recommend approval.
Correct.
Or not.
Correct.
And then it would go to City Council.
Okay, got it.
Or you could postpone it. But there is an application, and the applicant's the city, and we, from what I understand, aren't planning to withdraw the application.
Got it, thank you.
So if we were to deny, it would go to the council, and they could override our denial, whereas if we postpone, it would keep it more or less in limbo until we reheard?
Well said, Chair Schwartz.
Thank you. Commission, any other questions before we have a public hearing? All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 24-1, the rezoning for 2831 113th Avenue Northwest, City of Coon Rapids. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing on the rezoning? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler.
I think just to reiterate my comments here, I feel like, given the unique features of the site, and what, specifically that sewer line, which is going to really dictate what can and can't be done here, and the fact that we don't really know what folks want to do, the adjacent uses on 113th Avenue are moderate-density, and two properties over goes to high-density, but on the north side is low-density, we've got literally everything within a block. So I think we don't know what makes sense here, and we don't know what the buildability is on some portions of this. We don't know how the city wants to potentially split this either, and it sounds like the city doesn't know how they want to split it, and it's part of potentially the request for an RFP. So I feel like this is an opportunity for the city to say, if it was moderate, what would you do? If it was low, what would you do? Because both of those zonings fit here, and they make sense here, moderate to the south, low to the north, you know, and given that these sites are already split-zoned to begin with, make it even weirder and more complicated. I think we've solved it with the land use of where we want this to go, of what the densest this could absolutely be, and I think we know that the attributes of the site will keep it relatively on the low side. So I would, in this case, I would either say we, you know, we don't recommend a rezoning at this time, and recommend that the city bring back information, wait until they have more information, to then have a clearer rezoning plan. And then City Council, if they decide to enable the, enact the rezoning, they can, but I think I would not recommend rezoning at this time, so that we can just keep this moving forward and the city can do its things. But again, it's a recommendation, so it still keeps the process moving forward for the city.
Commissioner Geisler, you would be in favor of denying the rezoning rather than postponing?
I would recommend that we do not approve the proposed rezoning in Planning Case 24-1.
Also, approve or deny?
We're recommending denial, yeah.
Is that a motion?
I'll make it a motion, sure.
I'll second it.
Motion by Geisler, second by Hagler. I believe he was first.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bucicconi, do we need to have findings of fact of why, but with it, or is it, as it's just a recommendation internally? Is our comments sufficient?
I think the comments for the agenda item that we're specifically talking about now mainly occurred during a different agenda item, and so I would suggest that either you have a little bit more of a discussion or do throw a finding in there, yes.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may revise my motion then.
Commissioner Geisler.
So in Planning Case 24-1, I would recommend that we deny the proposed rezoning based on the fact that the adjacent land uses do not, on 113th Avenue, do not match the proposed zoning.
Is that?
I'll second that.
Well, we already have a second, is that?
Yeah.
Change? All right with the second here?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Motion by Geisler, second by Hagler, to recommend denial of this rezoning. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And this is a recommendation by the planning, or it is denied, I'm sorry, and this is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and will be introduced by the City Council at... City Council at their February 6th meeting. Thank you. Our next case is planning case 24-3, an ordinance amendment for PUD standards, City Code Section 11-902. Mr. Crowell.
All right, the final item tonight is for a zoning ordinance amendment that would revise Section 11902, our planned unit development standards. So planning staff, we've kind of identified some short and long-term updates to our zoning code, just to help clean up inconsistencies across the code and, and help align with current trends. So in, almost a year ago now, in January of 2023, we kind of gave an initial work plan to the commission, and we were going to focus on home occupations, wall signs, PUD regulations, and then some residential district housekeeping items. And so we first started with the home occupations and wall signs, those were adopted in July of 2023, and now we've since been working on the PUD regulations and the residential district amendments. So we had subsequent work sessions with the City Council on December 12th, this, of 2023, and then the Planning Commission as well on December 21st, 2023, to kind of go into more detail on, on what we were proposing. And I think, based on that feedback from the council and commission, we decided to proceed with the PUD amendment as it was presented in the work session, and then we'll likely bring forward some additional residential district amendments kind of throughout the, the year, the spring and early summer. So to talk about the specific changes tonight, again, it would, it's amending our planned unit development or PUD regulations. So the main change here, it would remove standards related to detached, single-family, common-interest community development, or DISCs, in our LDR2 zoning district. So in 2005, this kind of section was added to the PUDs, or the PUD standards, to say that any PUD in the LDR2 had to be this kind of DISC format, which are detached townhome developments, that had to meet very specific design standards. These standards have rarely, rarely been applied to any project in the city, and now are really just outdated. And so staff felt that these kind of DISC standards are really restrict the PUD tool, and kind of limit it to certain types of housing, where the city may be interested in more innovative types of, of housing and more flexibility, like the PUD tool is kind of designed to be. And then there's some language around boundary setback and requiring a homeowners' association that would, are also proposed to be removed, again, to really maintain the PUD as a flexible zoning tool. And so I think with that, I'll, I'll just kind of stand for any questions that you might have on the amendment.
Commission, any questions for Mr. Crowell? Hearing none, we have a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing in planning case 24-3, an ordinance amendment for PUD standards, City Code Section 11-902. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing, limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
In planning case, I move that in planning case 24-3, we recommend approval of the ordinance revising the PUD standards and amending City Code Section 11-902.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmucke, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries, this is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and introduced by the City Council at their February 6th meeting. On to other business, Mr. Crowell, anything for other business?
No, like I was mentioning earlier, we don't have any new land use or development applications for February. Staff is still kind of finalizing our schedule on those residential district housekeeping amendments, so we'll kind of keep everyone updated if we have something ready for the February meeting.
All right, thank you. Commission, anyone have anything for other business? Hearing nothing?
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by, no?
Not blocked.
Not blocked. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.